Welcome, everybody. Welcome to April 17th, 2018. It is 6:30 PM. We're here on this very windy, I should say slightly breezy day for our council meeting. First item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner, absent Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next item is going to be a proclamation. So, this week we are honoring our public safety telecommunications and records specialists, AKA also known as dispatchers. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Laramie Police Department, LARQ Division, and whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first first responders and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Laramie Police Department, LARQ Division, have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas, after emergencies, records specialists compile reports, statistics, and records accurately to reflect historical facts, and whereas, reports, statistics, and records become essential in the prosecution and defense and appeal by citizens through the criminal justice system, and whereas, records specialists of the Laramie Police Department, LARQ Division, have contributed substantially to the memorialization of public safety activities, and whereas, each dispatcher and records specialist has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Laramie, Wyoming declares the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators and Records Specialist Week in Laramie in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. So with that, I'd like to invite Chief Stalder up. If you'd like to say a few words, Chief.
Mayor and Counsel, I'd just mention that I think the important, there's two important parts in that proclamation. The first one is that dispatchers are truly that first first responder. Were it not for the dispatcher who answers the phone, you don't get a fire truck, you don't get an ambulance, and you don't get a police officer. And they're absolutely invisible to the public. They work in a room with pressure. They handle somewhere between 1,000 to 2,000 911 calls a month and answer the phone about 15,000 times, non-emergency. On the records side, they're even more invisible, but if it wasn't for records personnel, you wouldn't have crime statistics, you wouldn't have police reports that are then used for the prosecution of criminals, and you wouldn't have the organization that you have with all the paper, which is now not paper anymore, it's all electronic stuff. So, they truly are people that are not seen but provide absolutely critical services to all public safety personnel.
Thank you very much. Well, from the City Council, thank you to all of our public safety dispatch and records specialists. Can you guys stand? I think there's a few of you in the audience here. We'd like to give you a big round of applause. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, we should also mention that they work 24 hours a day.
They do.
That's, I think, an issue which is hard for us. We have to come in for counsel at night, but they work 24 hours.
They do. They work amazingly long shifts. They're always there when you call, and they're absolutely critical. So, thank you very much. Our next item on our agenda is a public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice, please?
Notice is hereby given that the City of Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on April 17th, 2018, in City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following ordinance. Original ordinance number 1982, original ordinance mending Title V of Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.10, or 010, excuse me. Definitions 5.09.350 malt beverage permits for special events, 5.09.355 catering permits for special events, 5.09.800 point system for alcoholic beverage license violations and suspensions. To make clarifications and address gaps in the point system. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the City of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you very much. So, at this time, I will open the public hearing for any comments, noting that we also have this item on our agenda. I want to have an opportunity for public comment when the item comes up. So, is there anybody who would like to comment during this public hearing on these changes to the alcohol catering permits, malt beverages, and point system? Please come forward. Welcome. If you can please state your name for the record, and when you're finished, there is a sheet of paper behind the City Clerk if you can sign in.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Roxy Hensley, and I believe I know most of you. I'm a resident of Laramie, and I'm also a business owner. I'm a business owner who is open 365 days of the year. I pay my taxes. I employ well over 100 people, and not only in my establishment, but in the events that I cater. I am someone who is affected by the proposed ordinance change. I would really like to understand the logic behind this change. It seems on the surface to be favoring one type of event over another, and I am not sure that the city wants to be placed in that position. It also seems to open the door for other event organizers to request changes to the ordinance. The purpose of a catering permit, as I understand it to read, entitled 12 of the Wyoming State statutes, excuse me, I've had a long day, is to allow the legal service of alcohol events held in a venue that do not have a regular liquor license. That is, at the university, at the stadium, at the gateway event, at the Marion Roche, the fairgrounds, so. The state law does not provide, okay, the state law does not provide for any basis on the cost of the enforcement or any other factor. It is simply one event, one vendor, and one permit. Multiple events or multiple vendors require multiple permits. There is no mention or prohibition of any number of cells' locations at the events. Further, the point of cells is irrelevant. It can occur at a bar, it can occur at a table, in advance, or to be paid by a sponsor. To say that an event requires only one permit because there is only one point of cell is correct, but it applies as well if there are numerous points of cells at one event. And I repeat, one event. The actual transaction occurs from the server to the customer, and enforcement should be an, be as, and enforcement of these events should be as interested as, as should be, how can I say that? The actual transaction occurs from the server to the customer, and enforcement of that should be the, in the interest in that transaction as it would be in the exchange of the money. In conclusion, I believe that each event where there is only one responsible party, it requires only one permit regardless of the number of people in attendance, the number of people working the event, and the length of the event, and the number of cells' locations at that event. This is where I believe the ordinance needs to be clarified before it is passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to give testimony during the public hearing about the changes? Okay, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. We'll move on to announcements. City Manager, do we have any announcements tonight?
No announcements, Mayor.
All right, so I have one announcement for everybody. Just remind me, so for the audience, during the year, we've been reading short snippets of very old ordinances to celebrate our 150th birthday, trying to reflect a little bit on how we got here. So, this one, I believe this is from the late 1800s, and it's entitled "Employment of Waiter Girls." "If any person or persons who are now or hereafter may be engaged in selling liquors by retail within the limits of the city shall employ persons commonly called waiter girls to sell, vend, or dispense any liquors in his or their place of business, or in any room or rooms adjoining to their said place of business. Every such person or persons shall be deemed guilty of disorderly conduct, and on conviction thereof, for each and every offense to be fined in a sub not less than $25, nor more than $50." That was a lot of money in the late 1800s, so I've been employed as a waiter girl.
I've been employed as a waiter girl.
All right, there we go. I have times of change. All right.
Waiter girl.
Waiter girl.
Waiter girls. Very interesting. All right, so let's move on with item number five, disclosures by City Council members. Do we have any disclosures this evening? None? Item number six.
Wow. I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Counsel Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabriel. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner, absent Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Move on to the regular agenda. Item number 10, Counsel Schuster, please.
Thank you. The title of our ordinance is "Approve Change Order Number Three to the Banner Road Sanitary Sewer." I move to approve the change order number three totaling $149,125 to the construction contractor, Simon Contractors, for adding to the Banner Road reconstruction project.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Director Smith.
Your Honor, the Mayor, members of Council, the 2018 fiscal year budget includes a project to improve Banner Road by raising the elevation by about two feet. We had originally intended on constructing those improvements upon the completion of the Banner Road sanitary sewer project. Early on in the sewer project, we added some scope of work. You might recall one of the other change orders where we installed a water line to help facilitate construction. Well, that also extended the construction period for the project, and at this point, we feel it is best to approach this as one project. Change order into the Banner Road sanitary sewer project. Let Simon Contractors raise the road when they're completed with the sanitary sewer project. It'll be a smooth transition and will, a much more efficient approach. Their quote did come in under the $150,000 budget, so staff would recommend the approval of the change order.
Questions for City staff? Counsel Hanson.
Just an observation, don't we usually try to combine these projects anyway so we don't have to tear up a road again to put something in? And so this is only a money-saving event because we'd have to start over again, and, or not over again, but we have to start differently again, and this would be more expensive. That's my understanding.
Your Honor, the Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, that's a great observation. If we were to terminate the sanitary sewer project, bid this out, and then come back in, it would likely be in excess of $150,000. So, that's a terrific observation.
It would at the same time. Thank you.
Counsel McKinney.
When they do the reconstruction of the road, it's just going to be a dirt road the way it is now?
Yes, sir.
No asphalt, no nothing?
No asphalt, yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, back to Council. Any discussion on this item from Council? All right, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Stoner, absent Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 11, Counsel Polikas.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a Cofflin-Pole Mountain Third Edition 10th filing plat, and I would move to approve the Cofflin-Pole Mountain Third Edition 10th filing plat, final plat, based on findings of facts and conclusions of law, acknowledging receipt of the Financial Security and Subdivision Security and Improvement Differral Agreement Acknowledgement Form, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign the plat.
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Planning Manager Tini.
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. I had the clerk hand out just a, it's a front and back page there. I handed that out to you. I was notified by the applicant's engineer that they had missed a survey marker, and so the plat that you have in your packet is going to look almost exactly the same as what you have right there, but it is slightly different. I am just showing that to you so that if you had any questions, you could see that it shifts stuff about a foot and a half to three feet off on some spots. It doesn't affect the overall approval or need, or ability for us to approve at this time, and it actually affects this plat and then the one that we will have coming up. As was noted, this is the Cofflin-Pole Mountain Third Edition 10th filing. This item is a two-lot residential subdivision on about a half of an acre. The intent of the subdivision is to, one, plat residential lots, which is an extension of Dillon Street to the north, but also to provide the ability of the continuation and extension of the preliminary plat that's effective for every, every two years in this situation due to when the preliminary plat was approved. The two lots that are provided are in conformance with all the conditions of the preliminary plat. All the public infrastructure, such as roads, water, sewer, are all being extended and provided for the two lots, as would be required for any larger subdivision as well. So, we have had, public notice has gone out on this item, like all final plats do. We've had no public comments on it, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for City staff? Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. I think that the two lots are Block Five, Lot Two, and Block Six, Lot Two, correct?
Correct.
The other ones are already built up. And on that Block Five, Lot Two, there are to the, I guess it would be to the west, there seems to be an alley. Does it have access to that alley, or how does this work? I don't quite understand that, because there's an alley right there. Is there a fence, or what do they do there?
Mayor and Counsel, currently, right now, what you have is a existing alleyway that is part, was part of the subdivision that's to the west, was plotted with that portion of the subdivision. It is possible that if someone in Block Five, Lot Two, built a house, they could have a rear-loading garage off the alley, or some other, you know, access off there if they desired, that that would be looked at and reviewed through the building permit process with a building permit, so.
But it would also have access from that street there.
Correct. Yeah, most, Mayor and Counsel, the, most of the time, access is off the street for most people, but it does provide another option on that lot, so.
That Lot to the south of it, does that have access to the alley? Because that's already built.
I don't know. I would have to go back and look, but if it wanted to, it could someday in the future, or in the, maybe it already does.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Any other questions for City staff on this item? All right, thank you. Do we have an applicant present for this one?
Yes, Mayor. The applicant is here.
Would the applicant like to speak at this time on the item?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant from Council on this one? No?
Yes.
Seems like you're off the hook. Any comments from the public on this item? All right, any discussion by Council on this item? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Stoner, absent Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Move on to item number 12, Counsel McKinney.
I move to approve the Paintbrush Edition Second Filing Final Plat based on findings of fact, conclusions of law, acknowledge receipt of the Financial Security and the Subdivision Security and Improvement Differral Acknowledgement Form, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign the plat.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Planning Manager Tini.
Mayor and Counsel, this is a similar final plat that's located just north of the final plat that you approved in your last item. This is the Paintbrush Edition Second Filing. This is the second filing of the Paintbrush Edition. This area, for knowledge, the Paintbrush Edition is a new preliminary plat and final plat that was done within the original Cofflin-Pole Mountain Third subdivision in order to realign some roads and provide some better configuration overall in this kind of north, I'm going to call it northwestern corner of this Cofflin-Pole Mountain Third subdivision, as well as add in some property that was down off of Reynolds Street. This is a one-lot subdivision. We, with, as with all subdivisions, do the public notice. We've received no public comment on this item. As you see, the sheet of paper that I handed out is the same thing. It's a, on the backside of it is the plat for this item that was changed a little bit because of that other survey marker that was found. Once again, that doesn't change any of the requirements or the ability for this final plat to meet conformance with the conditions of the preliminary plat. With this final plat and this one lot to the north, the road will be extended one more further block to the north, as well as all those utilities and extension of water, sewer, sidewalks. This is on that west side, so as Member Hanson noted, there's an alleyway to the west of the property there. The same would apply in this situation as well. As it's noted, the applicant is here, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counsel Hanson.
Just clarification. When you said the road will be extended, that's Dillon Street, right? That will be extended to the north.
Mayor and Counsel, yes, it would be Dillon Street.
Any other questions for City staff? All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Anything that the applicant wants to add? Okay. Any discussion by Council on this item? Seeing none, City Clerk, will you do roll call, please?
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner, absent Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 13, Counsel Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a memorandum of understanding that's going to require many signatures of many communities, including the county and our community, but this is the motion that I'd like to make. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Board of Commissioners of the County of Carbon, the town of Hannah, the town of Elk Mountain, the town of Medicine Bow, the town of Sinclair, Wyoming, the town of Saratoga, the City of Rawlins, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, the City of Laramie, and the town of Rock River for impact assistance funds for the TB Flats Wind Energy Project, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. City Manager.
Good evening, Counsel. TB Flats Wind Energy LLC has applied with the Wyoming Industrial Siding Council to construct and operate the TB Flats Wind Energy Project. That project will be located near the town of Medicine Bow and in Carbon County. The wind energy generation facility would produce 500 megawatts of energy and include up to approximately 200 turbines, at least one new substation, and operations and maintenance building, access roads, a collector's system, a generation tie-in line, and other ancillary facilities. This project would be located on about 52,000 acres of private and state land, according to the application filed with the state. The southern end of that 52,000 acres begins approximately seven miles north of Medicine Bow and just slightly east, or excuse me, just slightly west of the Albany-Carbon County line. The site is served by State Highway 487 running north out of Medicine Bow, and also by Highway 77. The applicant anticipates construction for this project will start in the second quarter of 2019 calendar year and should be complete by the end of December 2020. Construction manpower is anticipated to peak at about 500 workers during the height of the construction season over both of those years. That 500 worker peak would occur then in the 2019 July through September timeframe, and in the 2020 July through September timeframe. They will take a temporary shutdown of construction activity seasonally over the winter at the site. So, as you know from previous projects of this sort, we have a lot of wind projects planned in, around, and near Laramie. This is the most recent one, and as with previous wind projects, the City of Laramie has been determined to be within the affected area for the project. That determination is required to be made by the applicant and reviewed by the Siding Council and state staff under Wyoming state law. Being an affected party to the project allows the city to become a party to the industrial siding council's permitting process, and further allows us as an affected local government to receive impact assistance funds as they may become available during the course of that project. The affected local governments, as noted in the motion, are in Albany and Carbon County, basically the two counties and all of the municipalities and towns within those counties. As is standard with this process, those affected municipalities and county entities met last week to pre-discuss and enter into a memorandum of understanding for how impact assistance funds would be scheduled for payment and in what amount by each entity. That meeting occurred on April 11th. I attended and presented Laramie's anticipated impacts from this project. You'll all recall, you've probably seen the binders, they're this thick, they assess a whole range of socioeconomic activities that the project will cause in the affected jurisdiction. We expect to receive potentially half of the workforce over those temporary construction periods of about four to five months. Rawlins is projected to receive roughly the other half, and then we expect there will also be some stragglers living in the various smaller towns in, near, and around the project site. Based on that socioeconomic analysis, I project that the largest impact will be to our public safety services, and not so much within the city limits, but likely commuters traveling to and from the work site up US 30 and on past Medicine Bow and in the realm of our EMS response. However, it is not possible to be precise in that estimation. Depends on a lot of factors, weather, and how carefully people drive. So, we did present that case. You have received the draft MOU from the Carbon County Clerk. That MOU, along with Attachment A, which is really the exhibit showing what each city will receive and on what payment schedule, are included in your packet. All of the participating in affected jurisdictions today and tomorrow are approving the memorandum of understanding, which is then submitted to the state, to the industrial of understanding, which is then submitted to the state, to the industrial siding council for, uh, their consideration. We expect, as with past projects, that the decision that we had come to locally will be upheld by the siding council in their official permit, um, review and permit issuance. If you have any questions?
Questions from city manager. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, your honor, I, yeah, I have a question, I looked at the, the table, uh, at the end, uh, and it says for Laramie, emergency services and public safety as a need, not housing or anything like that, which would be too far. Uh, what I'm asking is, does this mean we have to station an ambulance out there and, and a, a policeman or, or something like that? Or is it just at the necessity, if the necessity arises that we send them out there? That's of course a long way away, and that is my question.
Um, Mayor and Council, our police response is largely within the city limits, um, as you know, we do have mutual aid agreements with other, um, agencies, and, and one of those agencies includes the Albany County, yes, the Albany County Sheriff's Office, although it is not, um, common that, that mutual aid is invoked and, and our folks are out in the county. Um, where we expect the most of city services to be affected is in our ambulance or emergency medical service. As you know, through our agreement with Iverson Memorial Hospital, the city, the municipal government provides ambulance services throughout Albany County, um, and that is, um, you know, the content of our discussion last week, and where we, uh, predict and where we have seen our services impacted is for accidents that occur on roadways throughout Albany County. Uh, as you know, there's a large stretch, about 80 miles, between here and the project site, and the bulk of it being on our, on, uh, US 3287 within our response area. Um, so that's where we expect the bulk of that impact to be, is in emergency medical services, just because we provide that throughout Albany County, it's not, uh, within the municipality solely.
Correct, I understand that, but, you know, talking about the 80 miles, if there is a, let's say there's a serious accident, takes about an hour and a half to get out there, uh, under this agreement, would we station something out there, or we just hope for the best?
Um, we have no intention of, um, staging ambulances out in the county, we'll continue to respond from within our jurisdiction, as called out to do so.
So they're on their own, so to speak, out there?
Um, no, no, I mean, if there's an accident on the highway, they'll call dispatch, and we will dispatch an ambulance to the scene or whatever else is needed, no different than we do now.
But, but I mean, at the work site, you know, accidents, let's say, on the work site?
Um, because the work site is within Carbon County, Carbon County is, uh, agencies are the primary responding agencies, and so Carbon County EMS agencies would respond at the work site itself, yeah, that's why I said we expect our impact to be more from commuter traffic moving back and forth from maybe, uh, housing here in the city of Laramie to the work site on a daily, weekly basis.
Thank you, thank you, your honor.
Other questions for the city manager? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on this item? Okay, seeing none, any discussion, uh, from council on this item? All right, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
I'm gonna hold off because I missed a good portion of the conversation, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero noes, and one abstention.
All right, thank you, that motion carries. On to item number 14, Counselor Hanson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting behind. Okay, I would like to move that council approve original ordinance number 1982, original ordinance number 1982, amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.010 definitions, and 5.09.350 malt beverage permits for special events, 5.09355 dash catering permits for special events, and 5.09800 point system for alcoholic beverage licenses, violations, and suspensions on second reading.
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. City Clerk?
Yes, your honor, council, um, we are on second reading of this ordinance change for you, and I thought I would provide a little more history as far as, um, why some of these changes have come up for you. So, um, the proposals that we have in, not the point system, but in the definitions and in the malt beverage permit and catering permit section, is historically how things have been done at the city. We have a policy from 2011 that existed that explained how to do the catering and malt beverage permits, and it was explained just as we have the ordinance written, where there's one permit for every bar, um, that we have. Somewhere between 2011 and 2015, before I came on, um, there were some rare occasions where an allowance was made where there were two bars in a single room, like a ballroom. So a smaller manageable-sized room, uh, folks wanted to have two bars, and they were then being charged just one permit fee because the space was manageable, it can be, um, enforced easily, um, and so that was allowed to, to happen under one permit fee. Um, lately, that there's, uh, there's been, um, some confusion about where that, where that small allowance should then extend to, and so in order to provide the clerk's office some more clarity, some clarification, get it into code rather than it being, um, on a city policy, uh, we're requesting just to go back to the simple, one bar means one permit. Um, there is, okay, so each, I talked about that, we talked about each bar being a, a place of potential risk for underage drinking, overconsumption, all those kind of things, each place can be a, a spot of risk. So to clean up the confusion, we just want to have a clear line. Um, so even in places where there's two bars in a ballroom, now there would be a charge for each bar. So that's the change in, from where current policy is to where this ordinance would be taking us, um, but it's really taking us back to the beginning and where things started. And I know there's a little, um, I want to clarify this Brew Fest Wine Fest section, and why we're putting some definitions, they're becoming much more common, um, so we're taking the definition, what is explained by the liquor division, as far as how we should be permitting those events, and we're putting it into writing, too, for the clarity of the public. So a Brew Fest and Wine Fest is different than a catering event. First of all, it's a different permit, it's a malt beverage permit for a Brew Fest. Um, the organizer of a Brew Fest or Wine Fest purchases all that alcohol from the vendors, and then there is one location where they come into the event, folks buy tickets or wristbands or tokens, however it is that their organizer does it, and then those folks are allowed to go to the various tables within the event. Um, they are given sample size servings of whatever it is that the vendors have to offer, and a big stipulation that allows these Brew Fest and Wine Fest to function under one permit is that there can be absolutely no other sales that take place with, at any of those vendor tables. The vendors cannot sell t-shirts, they can't sell mugs, they can't sell items to take home, all they can do is answer questions and hand over sample size servings of whatever it is they have to offer. So that's very different than when you're going to, um, a wedding and you're buying a full-size drink and consuming it, so it's a different situation. Um, so that's why we're, we're trying to put some clarity down, what's understood and has been the way we've been functioning, and what's explained by the liquor division, and how Wine Fest and Brew Fest are different than other, um, events, we want to just put that in writing to help the public to understand that it's not the same thing and that they function differently. So that's why that, that's added in there. And then we have those point system additions that we have, um, with, just to add a little more clarity, we've had some, um, clubs that want to have some events outside, and so we want to make sure that everybody understands that clubs, those limited retail licenses can only serve alcohol to their members or their members' guests, and that folks off the street can't wander in to a club's event and buy alcohol. So they have to be a guest of one of the members, or they can be, they're a guest of the member if they're renting the facility, so that covers if somebody's renting the facility, uh, you know, for a wedding or something like that, they're also able to, um, buy alcohol from those. And then also, um, we have the point system, um, addition for serving or letting alcohol go out of, open containers go out of your facility, just for some clarification and, and help the business owners understand and, and ensure that open bottles and containers that are not properly sealed by state statute and ordinance are not allowed to leave the premise, so. Any questions?
Questions, Vice Mayor and then Counselor Hanson?
And I apologize if I missed it here, have we defined sample size?
Nope, we have not defined sample size, mm-mm.
Okay. Do you think we need to define sample size?
That would be up to you, if you would like to define, it would have to be like a maximum ounce amount or something like that, if, that might be something that, to take a discussion up with folks that have actually held those events to understand what a standard sample size would be, I wouldn't know what that is for a sample size.
You're gonna get us in trouble.
A thought, perhaps?
Are you, are you trying to turn to you over here?
I am.
Mayor, Council, um, certainly we could do that, it, it's, of course, a bright line is always better than, you know, you don't want a 48-ounce sample of beer, clearly. It's nice, it would, so it's always good to have a bright line, however, I think, as we, as we draft ordinances, we also try to allow some, you know, reasonable interpretation, um, and of course, so you can see the, the line we try to walk. There would be nothing wrong with figuring out what a normal sample size is and writing it in. I do think that would take a little, I don't, I don't know that, I could tell you what it is, but I'm sure a vendor could.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, your honor, I wanted to have some clarification, we heard a public comment earlier, and I wonder, is this referring to, whoops, section 5.9.350, then Item D, the malt beverage permit is required for each dispensing area? I just wanted to clarify in my own mind what we're talking about here.
We are talking about both, sorry, your honor, um, council, we are talking about both malt beverage permits and catering, alcohol catering permits.
So this, Section D would apply here, right, is that correct? Uh, on page 13 of 35, I have one malt beverage permit is required for each dispensing area bar located within the permitted premise, is that the section we're referring to?
Your honor, council, are you in the full thing, or are you just in the ordinance?
I'm in the full thing, where, this is marked in red because it's a new section, uh, so it would be on page?
Yes.
13.
Okay. Yes.
Item D.
Your honor, Counselor Hanson, you, we are, we would be adding Section D under that, and then a very similar Section C under catering permits for special events, says the same thing but refers to catering events, which is all alcoholic beverages.
Yeah.
Malt beverages are just your beer-type beverages.
Okay, and, and could you clarify, because of what we heard before, what the objection is here and what you're trying to address, because that was unclear to me.
What I'm trying to address by adding this section?
Yes, and, and in light of what was mentioned before by Mrs. Roxy.
Sure, what I'm trying to clarify is that there's a little confusion about where permits are needed, and so traditionally, in the city of Laramie, there has always been one permit for every bar. So we had done a few exceptions along, over the last few years, where if there were two bars in a small room, like a ballroom, a contained area, we've allowed that to exist under one permit instead of two, um, basically to be nice, you know, we're trying to be nice, it's a small area, we seemed, thought it was reasonable that enforcement and everything could still happen without really an effect of adding that extra bar, it wouldn't affect it much. Um, however, any request to take that one permit and extend that into an entire building where you've got multiple rooms, multiple things, multiple floors, multiple things going on, and now you're, you're starting to get concerned with enforcement, we've got places where you no longer can watch that with one officer, with one person, now you're, you're, you're managing the whole area, so that's where the concern comes in, and so we're just trying to dial it back a, a little bit and just make a clear cut, clean, it's just one permit per bar, go back to where we started.
If I may follow up?
Please.
Uh, the, the question, I guess, is in relation to what's happening in the stadium.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do they sell alcohol at several places in the stadium?
Your honor, Counselor Hanson, yes, they do, multiple locations around the stadium.
Okay, and they would require then a permit for every one of those locations?
Correct, which is what happened this last year as well, that's what was required this last year.
Okay.
And so it would continue the same, there would be no change from what happened last year.
Are there any other situations like that?
The Arena Auditorium is another one, where we have lots of, of serving locations.
Okay, and so each of those locations, only if they are sort of contiguous to one another, would it be one permit?
Your honor, Counselor Hanson, currently, yes, this ordinance, though, would take it back to one permit per bar, so if they want to have a large bar in one room, they can certainly set up, set up a nice large bar, have several bartenders behind it, go under one permit, that would be allowed.
Sure.
Um, but when the, the bars are separated by a distance, then they each would need to have their own permit.
Thank you, thank you, your honor.
All right, Counselor Schuster, then Polikas, then Gabriel.
Okay, so, I'm just, I think you said it already, but I want to make sure, so, last year at a cowboy basketball game, if they had eight dispensing areas, they had to get eight permits last year.
Correct, they didn't have eight there, but, but theoretically, if they had eight separate concession areas open, they would have to have eight separate permits.
So nothing's changing from last year?
Mm-mm.
And now I'm gonna go back to a bar, um, didn't we pass a, didn't the state pass and say that if, I'll just pick on them across the street, that since they have a liquor license for the VFW, which I guess is a club, or I guess, that's Legion, that's not VFW, the Legion, that if they had things going on multiple floors, that one license covers one building?
Your honor, um, Counselor Schuster, yes, the liquor division did that for a regular license, where the license holder is in charge of that whole building, where they have staff covering the entire building, yes. So the liquor division and the state did not extend that outside of those, uh, retail and club licenses.
Okay, that's fine, I was just, I was just, just curious on that, because I thought we had one license per, if it owned a building, that entire building then became a, I hate to say a dispensing room, but yes, that if, if one of the businesses downtown that had it, that had multiple floors, if they opened something up, they rent out the second floor to a wedding, that as long as they held a liquor license in that building, they could then go serve on that second floor.
Your honor, Counselor Schuster, if they had the right license to do that, yes, and if it's their, and if it's their own building.
One license, yeah.
Mm-hmm, and if that's their location.
Okay, and so, this is the way it was last year, because I know that this is about the football and the basketball stadium, so this is, nothing's changed from last year to this year, it, did the price go up or anything?
Your honor, Counselor Schuster, in July 1st of, of last year, you did increase the price from $50 to $70, $75 per license.
Okay.
But for this whole entire last football and basketball season, for when it was actually in play, the license would have been 75 unless they purchased the license ahead of time, or the permit, excuse me, ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Polikas?
I think the question was answered, it's $50 to $75.
It's $50 to $75 per license. It's, excuse me, it was $50, it's gone to $75 per license now?
Your Honor, Counselor Polikas, yes.
And did I hear you correctly, where the university, the basketball and the football games, they're already being charged? They have to get a permit for each, each serving station?
Correct.
Okay.
That is how it is currently.
That really hasn't changed. What's changed is for other events that may be large enough to require more than one bar, is what it comes down to.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, have there ever been, I was thinking of Jubilee Days, for instance, and the Brew Fest. Has there ever been an occasion where they had a Brew Fest slash Wine Fest?
No, not at the same time.
Is that a possibility?
No, those are two separate permits and they cannot exist in conjunction with each other.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
Yeah, now that they brought that one up, another question came up. We have Jubilee Days, we close off the streets. We have, I'm gonna say liquor licenses, selling alcohol because they're having an outdoor dance or tables out there, and a lot of people get up with their drink and move throughout the closed street. How is, is this affecting that at all?
Your Honor, Counselor Schuster, no. Last year, for example, we worked with Main Street for their mashup. They had closed off the tea, if I'm remembering correctly. Nancy, the deputy clerk, does all these, so my clarity on it is a little more foggy. But each, they had four different vendors that were allowed to bring their license out on the street, and they had four different permits. So, they had one vendor on each leg of the street. We marked it off so that they would butt up against each other so folks could move from one to the other. But there were four separate permits for that event. Same thing with Jubilee Days. If they have different vending areas, they would have multiple permits for the multiple vending areas. If they have one, then it's one permit for the entire thing.
So, if a bar has, and I'm just gonna use the word, an outdoor street dance, and they put up these pylon things to try to keep it so that minors cannot be in there, they can only, when they sell a drink in there, it has to stay within their pylons?
Your Honor, Counselor Schuster, yes. It all depends on how the permit is requested and what's being requested. If the event organizer is requesting to have an open container permit for that entire, you know, tea area downtown, then that becomes the entire open container permit, even if there's only one dispensing area. If the permit holder is requesting to just have a section in front of their establishment that's barricaded off, then that is the only open container permit. So, it depends on what's being requested. That doesn't matter in the cost of the permit. The only thing that matters is the number of bars that you have set up within that area. Each bar will have to have its own permit.
So, just one large bar in a permitted area is best?
Uh-huh.
Because it's only one permit.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Just to follow up on your quest, on your statement. One vendor establishes four stations, same vendor, right? That vendor would require four, would be required to get four permits?
Yes. Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, yes.
Because that was the question, I think, earlier. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any, Counselor Shumway.
A question about the University of Wyoming. They have one permit that covers the entire campus, correct?
Your Honor, Counselor Shumway, no. They have one permit that covers the Union Building and it's a malt beverage-only permit.
Okay. So, if they have, if they have an event, let's say at the Rochelle, well, the new student, Gateway Center, and that doesn't fall under their license at all, they have to have that catered by an outside group?
Sorry. Your Honor, Counselor Shumway, no, they do, they cannot extend their permit into that. Most places want more than just beer anyway. Right now, the UW can only serve beer. And so, for events like that, they want a full bar. So, they bring in somebody who has either a retail or resort liquor license to do an alcoholic catering permit for that event.
Any other questions for city staff? Counselor McKinney?
So, vendor gets a permit. It has one bar. They're responsible for the one bar for the one permit. But if they have four bars and they have four permits, they're still responsible for the four bars.
Uh-huh.
So, I don't understand why they have to have four permits. They're still responsible. If they're in an enclosed environment into a building, are you gonna require a square footage for said single bar or four, four different bars?
Sure. Your Honor, Counselor McKinney, each permit is for a bar, which is a place where you're exchanging money for alcohol, you're dispensing alcohol, you're checking IDs. Each bar is a place of potential trouble for underage drinking, overconsumption, all of those things. And all four of those places are places that need enforcement and monitoring.
But you're still gonna have the same amount of staff whether you have four bars or 20-serve bar. You have 20 bartenders behind a big bar or you have five, four separate bars with five bartenders. It's still the same amount of staff, yes?
Your Honor, Counselor McKinney, possibly for the establishment, but not for the city of Laramie. So, the city of Laramie is responsible for keeping our community safe, and that includes monitoring what's happening at events.
So, we have, no, I mean, like so.
So, we're talking about police enforcement.
If we go out to the fairgrounds and you're having, you're having a reception at the fairgrounds and Roxy's catering it, and she goes out there and she has one bar, she has one permit.
Uh-huh.
But if she goes out there and she has four bars, she has to have four permits.
Your Honor, Counselor McKinney, that would be the proposed change. And part of it is to bring clarity. Because if, if we're talking the two bars at the fairgrounds versus two bars in a totally different floors in a building, we're trying to bring clarity because there is confusion. So, I'm looking for a little brighter line in which to function under. So, that's why we're bringing this in. So, yes, we did that in the last few years as a courtesy. But what's happening is that that courtesy is now being taken to a level that is causing concern for the city of Laramie in our inability to enforce those events.
And you know of said issues and problems?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. So, if you have the issues and the problems, shouldn't you just write them a ticket and give them points? And then, they can't get a permit, right?
Counselor Somerville, McKinney, the concerns we have is enforcement in general, being able to enforce and the cost of enforcement.
But that's their responsibility, though.
It's also the city of Laramie's responsibility, and that's where we're, we come in as being concerned.
So, when somebody does that, you send police officers out to their, to enforce the, the people don't leave the building with alcoholic beverages?
Counselor McKinney, Your Honor, if we know of issues, yes, we send police officers out there to help us with all those.
Counselor Hanson.
Your Honor, I think Counselor McKinney is bringing up an important point or a point that could be discussed. Depending on the size of the bar, maybe it's, you know, if you have one bar with 20 bartenders, that's one permit. But if you had, let's say, four different ones with one bartender each, I mean, the enforcement is much easier, and still, they need four bartenders, you know? I almost think we might want to tie it to the size of the, of the bars, whatever. Because I see the point that was brought up earlier that, you know, if you have four itty-bitty stations to, because of the convenience of the big location, like the stadium or something like that, you have to get four permits. I, I'm not that happy with that, quite frankly. Depending on the size of the, of the establishment, you know? But maybe that's hard to write. I don't know.
So, just a reminder for Counsel, we're just in questions right now. So, let's hold off on discussion. City manager?
Mayor, Counsel, I'd like to just clarify. The applicant determines how many bars or points of sale they choose to have. To Counselor McKinney's question and Counselor Hanson's statements, presumably, they're wanting to maximize their profit, and they are going to determine whether or not to have one bar in a large, open space, like the fairgrounds, as Angie said, or whether it makes more sense to have four points of sale. They're gonna look at their staffing numbers. They're going to decide how to staff, how many people to staff, and how many locations to staff. That's not something the city's dictating. What Angie is recommending to you is that there are situations where you have a building with multiple floors where they may want four bars. And it is not possible for someone from the city to say, stand in a room and easily view that all four of those dispensing locations are complying with the requirements of the law. To verify that compliance, that person from the city would have to go maybe upstairs to room three and then down to level two to room one. And so, the issue is not how many staff. That's the business's concern. We don't care. The issue is how many of our staff need to be on site to verify compliance with the requirements. And so, certainly, Angie doesn't dictate how many. Open spaces are very different than, say, the stadium, where it's impossible for one person to clearly view all dispensing areas and verify compliance. So, I don't know if that helps or if that makes it muddier.
Counselor McKinney, question?
So, can we just not write in there somewhere, if you have a open concept place to where you can functionally see four or five different stations that you have to have for the party that you've got? I, I'm not understanding why we have to charge them five times when you can see that clearly.
Right. If I can clarify, Counselor McKinney, they're only gonna be charged five times if they choose to have five dispensing locations.
So, you want three or four, 500 people to show up at one bar?
Well, as Angie said, you could have one large bar that takes up the entire north wall of the fairgrounds and stretches for 50 feet.
What's the difference between 20 bartenders and five bartenders in separate areas?
It's about the ability of the city to monitor the compliance of those bartenders, that they're checking licenses, that they're adhering to the tips training. But no one is telling that vendor how many points of sale to have or how many employees to have. They choose and they put on the application what they want, and then Angie reviews what they want.
City clerk.
Sure. Your Honor, let me clarify this. Now, if Counsel would like us to continue doing what we've been trying to do, which is to accommodate folks who want to have, you know, a ballroom rented out and want to have two bars in two separate areas in a ballroom, we're open to that. But then, we need some help to define where the size of that space maxes out. So, we need some kind of help then defining. So, if you want us, if you want me to come back with a proposal to define what that could look like, so, and I would suggest something like a ballroom, a typical ballroom at, like the Hilton or at the Gateway, where it's one large area, we can find out what that standard is and have that be your max. It has to be within, we can come up with some kind of definition if that's the will of Counsel. We can certainly do that. We're just trying to find some clarity as to where does that stop? Like, where does, where does that allowance of multiple bars stop? Because having an open-ended size of that is problematic and concerning. So, if that's the will of Counsel, I would be happy to come back. You can certainly postpone second reading. I can come back with a suggestion for that. If that's what you're, if that's what's giving you a hard time with this, we'd be happy to do that. But I would just, just reiterate that we, that we need to come up with some kind of maximum space that is easily enforceable.
Vice Mayor.
So, I may be entering into the discussion stage.
Hold on.
But, because I don't have a question. But I, I'd also be willing to postpone if we want to entertain that.
Okay.
Because I have a couple.
I think we need, we still need to let public comment happen as well, so. Counselor Shumway, do you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, the only thing we had, the police, our enforcement responsibilities were for individuals bringing alcohol, the public bringing alcohol illegally into the stadium and into the arena. And we had, we had a, we had a need to make sure that there was police efforts to curb that and to make sure that, you know, that was being taken care of. Now that we've entered a new stage, which means that we have legal sales of alcohol by vendors that come in, my question is this. How much have we had to increase the staff, the city police staff, to come in to now deal with the legal sales of alcohol within these events, within the athletic events? Is it the same number? Is it a greater number? What's the, because these are generally paid for by the university, the police, or by grants to do this. And the city obviously provides the trained officers, but I don't think we pay the cost of them being there to police the use, consumption of alcohol. And is that close to being correct?
City manager, do you want to field that one?
Counsel, so, I'm not, I'm a little confused by the question, but certainly, the enforcement.
Question is, has there been an increase in the number that we need at these events?
I would say the number of FTEs, no. I mean, clearly, we've reduced staffing in the police department, which means we have fewer folks to do the same amount of work, frankly, more work with. The number of hours that we are spending in total may be different than it was prior to legal sales in those large venues. I'd have to do some more research, though, to feel confident sharing any numbers like that with you.
And am I correct that it is not, the cost of those officers being there is covered by the university, not by the city?
So, in terms of the reimbursement for overtime expenses, some overtime in public safety is reimbursed by the university. I'd have to go back and review whether all of our activities in the stadium are fully reimbursed by the university.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Honor. Let me draw an analogy. It seems like we want law enforcement at every bar, at every dispensing station. We don't put a policeman on every street corner in order to enforce the traffic laws. So, I think we're measuring with two different measures here, just because it's the damn alcohol. You know, and I don't, I, I think this is unfair in some fashion, that we have to have a law enforcement person at every station present, you know? I don't see this because we don't do it in any other aspect of our lives. My analogy, put a policeman at every street so that the traffic laws are enforced. I mean, we don't do that. It would be ridiculous, right? So, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with this.
Wonder, again, we need to keep to questions. City manager?
I just want to clarify, Mayor, thank you. Counselor Hanson, no one is saying that we station a police officer at every single bar service location. That's not the practice. But there are walkthroughs that occur at strategic times. And no, there is not a law enforcement officer stationed at every service area. That's never been our practice nor our intention. But there is a verification process and a compliance process that we, as public officials and as the issuer of the licenses and, or, excuse me, of the applications are responsible for. And so, I don't want to leave an impression that a police officer has to be present everywhere at liquor sold. That's not the case, nor will it be.
Counselor Gabriel, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on Counselor Shumway's question, if I could, Janine.
Yes.
It's a combination of enforcement at UW games, Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, UW Police, Laramie Police. And so, I think what we're trying to find out, is there any more obligation on the city's part now that the university has the liquor situation?
No, but every bar that we issue a permit for, we have a responsibility to provide service to that site should we need to and check on compliance.
City clerk.
Let me just make a clarification. Each of these permits is a city of Laramie permit. So, if there's something happening that isn't not supposed to be happening under our permit, it's the city of Laramie that needs. it's the city of Laramie that needs to police that, nobody else. So, unless there's somebody, you know, there's a, and, you know, if we're taking compliance checks, if we're talking not posting permits, if we're talking, you know, any issues that where the, the license holder is not doing what they're supposed to be doing, that's the city's problem, not UW's problem. Because it's our permit and they're, they have this license under our authority.
City manager?
Thank you. And, and, you know, it occurs to me, maybe both Counselors Shumway and Gabriel are referring to the general police presence at these large venues. And I would say some of that police presence is more crowd control, right? That is a different animal than what Angie has just described for you. The responsibility that we have as the license issuing agency to make sure that compliance with the license and the conditions of it occurs. Yeah. But the folks standing around on the field, you know, just kind of participating in crowd control and management is a different situation.
Counselor McKee, you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for city staff? All right. Thanks, city clerk. Let's just sit down for a minute. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you.
So, Ms. Hensley, just a reminder, because we're on the item, I have to limit you to five minutes and would ask you to address items you didn't address earlier in your public, during the testimony in the public hearing.
And, and, and I'm just going to renew that I believe that it was the intent of the law when writing the statute, that when you go to get a permit, it's for one event. And I am saying that the, a football game is one event, it's under one building, or at Gateway, it's in one building. And to require us to get numerous permits is cost prohibitive and plus, it's against the intent of the, of the legislatures. I, I did want to address a couple of things that were brought up by, first of all, by Ms. Pierce. When you asked about sample size at the Brew Fest, and I love the Brew Fest, I have, I have nothing against it, but it, it's, it's a little bit irrelevant when you talk about sample size when it's an unlimited amount of liquor that people are able to get. So, if you're going to, you know, address that issue, I think that you need to, you know, address the amount that people can get as well besides the size. Again, I, I think with this, this new proposed ordinance, I feel like the city is favoring one event over, in particular, my events at the stadium and the arena and the gateway. I am one vendor. I am in control of that, all those bars in that one event space. And I have the responsibility to make sure that my staff is in compliance with the law. And they do, they, we have tips training, I have training on the job, I go over and be above what is needed for, for us to a, to be able to do our sales at the university. We have scanners from the liquor division. We have to put everybody's ID in there. We give them wristbands. We are only allowed to sell four beers per game, per person. And we also have to stamp people as well. So, I, I mean, we, we are really asked to do a lot more than what the Brew Fest is I, I don't want to be offensive here, but, so, by this ordinance, you know, I, I don't care if it's a malt beverage or malt beverage with wine, because we do not serve liquor at the football games or the arena. We only sell beer and the wine. Okay? So, when you have, at the Brew Fest, you're going to only ask for one permit when, in essence, you have many vendors. You have vendors from Salt Lake City, you have vendors from Utah and Colorado that's coming in. So, if something were to happen, who's responsible for that? And you're only asking for one permit in this big area. When you talk about enforcement, I believe that there is much more enforcement at the Brew Fest than there is at the university and the arena. And we did get a report back from, from the governor's council after the first year of selling at the stadium, and the incidents were lower than the prior year. So, we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that everything is enforced and everything is safe and legal. And, and I, it's my understanding that, that the University of Wyoming pays for the additional staff that's needed for enforcement or the city is reimbursed for that, to answer your question. I, I, I asked that at one of our meetings and that was what I was told, so. But, you know, I, I appreciate you, you know, looking into this a little bit more because I do truly believe with the way that the ordinance is written, you're opening yourself up to something that, that could cause problems not only for you but for other people as well as myself down the road. So, if you, I don't know if I can answer any questions.
Not, not at this point.
And, and, you know, I would, I would love to be part of this discussion. I have been at the Gateway for the, since it opened, I'm their main supplier. I'm, I, we're the ones that are doing all the beer sales at the arena and the football game. I mean, we know, we know the questions that need to be answered. It's not other people in this room because they're not there. They don't know what's going on. And, and so, I would really like to be part of your discussion if I could.
Thank you very much. Counselor Plakas?
I need a clarity when the speaker's finished.
It's not usually appropriate to ask a, a speaker's question.
No, 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 no. I was going to ask it to counsel. I, I, excuse me, I thought you were done.
Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
The clarity I need is, we're discussing two different things, I think. The, the stadium and the basketball arena, that's already been done and we're requiring permits for each station right now. So, what I'm hearing is an argument, not for the changes we're proposing, but an argument for what was, what was proposed or what, what was changed a while ago. But then, I'm also hearing part, the changes we're proposing have to do with the Gateway and it, and places other than the basketball and the football arena. But from Roxy, I'm hearing an argument that we're paying too much for the basketball permits, we're paying too much for the football permits. And I object to what's happening, what's going to be happening if we approve what we're going to, what we may approve tonight.
City clerk, can you provide clarification or I'm happy to? You go ahead, your honor. I think that the, what we have on the table right now, it's nothing new from what's being done. So, we've required vendors to obtain a permit for every station, and that's been in city policy at administrative level. And now, what we're taking, doing is taking that administrative policy and putting it into ordinance so that it's a very clear line on, on this is what counsel endorses and says, this is, agrees with the administrative policy that's currently in place. So, essentially, there would be no changes if we approve this policy to the way it's being done.
But we're expanding it to other facilities such as the Gateway and whatever other catering can happen in the community. Is that correct?
Your honor, Counselor Plakas, the only effect that this would have that would be different from what we're currently doing is, a couple of times a year, we will have folks who will want to have two bars in a ballroom at the Gateway or the Hilton or some, you know, a large room like that, where it's, it's one, one room, it's a contained area, where currently, we are allowing them to have those two bars under one permit. That would go away. It happens four times a year where people request something like that. It usually, it doesn't happen very often. Really, for the mass amount of permits, nothing will change from what we're doing right now.
City clerk, can you clarify? So, the Gateway and the stadium and the arena have all been under this system and operating under this system. There's no changes or additional?
Correct, your honor.
Thank you. That does help me.
All right. All right. So, we were at the discussion portion, but before we start this, this is second reading. It is now almost eight o'clock. I think we have another long discussion in front of us on our next item, so I want to be cognizant of time to make sure we don't press this too long. So, we've had a couple of suggestions possibly for square footage requirements or whatnot, so, maybe a little discussion and then I think we might have a motion for postponement potentially to give the clerk time to work that up and bring it back. So, counsel's pleasure?
So, I've got a.
Go ahead.
Sure? Okay. So, I appreciate the learning of the unlimited amount of alcohol or beer at the Brew Fest. But if there are any other conditions in terms of sample size defined, I think it might be worth having a discussion somewhere down the road if, if, if counsel is interested in that. My second point has to do with the, the permitting. I fully understand where Roxy is coming from in terms of, of her concern about this, but having been a waiter girl for a very long time, I absolutely understand where the city is coming from as well and will be supporting the city in, in this regard. And the other thing that we haven't talked about yet that I'd like to throw on the table potentially before we move for postponement is increasing the fines related to our permit system. And I apologize for not getting any sort of amendment suggestion to other folks on counsel as well as to city clerk and staff, but if, I would like to see a increase in those fines and not just a minor increase. I'd like to see something substantial or at least a little bit more than where it currently, currently sits. And for those that want to look at where this is written, it's in our very long document. It's the one that I think has about 33 pages. They don't have page numbers on the bottom of the page, but I think it's one of the only H's in all the attachment.
Second to last page.
Second to last page. There we go. I didn't keep going. Okay. So, if I need to move on a couple of amendments related to fine permit increasing, I can do that tonight or we can throw it out there for consideration if we move to.
Postpone.
To postpone. So, I'd be, I'd be happy to go either way on that.
Counselor Plakas?
Yeah. Very briefly, the only, I think there's a great difference between the arena auditorium and the football stadium and the stations and the distance between the stations and also the volume compared to a, even an event in the Gateway Center, for instance. I'm somewhat comfortable with having one room, two stations, one room, three stations. And I think we can limit the square footage in some capacity to make it work. I am uncomfortable, I'd be very uncomfortable if we had that same standard for the basketball or the football or even if it was a multi-floored, where you have numerous floors or numerous rooms situation. But I think we can write something up to make it a little more flexible from that standpoint and still get the intent that we want to get. I have a lot of confidence in our attorney. That woke him up.
Is there any other discussion from counsel? Counselor Gabriel?
Just briefly, Mayor, thank you. We talked about size in section one of the ordinance. It mentions in here for Brew Fest and Wine Fest, trial-sized portions.
Yep.
So, I don't know if that was brought up or not, but I just noticed that, I was reading here a little clearer, like closely, that trial-sized.
So, like three ounces?
The team go back for 20 trial sizes if you are.
Two ounces.
Counselor McKinney?
I, I just would like to make a statement of, I, I agree with Roxy on the point that you have multiple vendors coming from out of state and once they leave the state, how are they be, held accountable if something goes wrong in their part or their section? Why are they not responsible for their own permit? Why are we giving them one permit? You're giving a permit to one large entity and you have 100 entities coming in? That makes no sense to me.
Counselor Schuster?
There's still, each individual person is responsible for their section. Yes, they should be for a permit, so we know who's responsible for that.
I, I know what the law says and it says, and I don't like it, I, I agree with you. If we have 35 stations, there should be 35 permits.
Yeah, absolutely.
But since you pay one fee and you come in that front door, and that fee then is at point of sale for the entire tent, because it's a tent down at Brew Fest, I'm on the railroad committee and, and I don't like how the place looks when they're done. I'll just make that statement. And I've never attended it because some people call it Drunk Fest, they don't call it Brew Fest, because they pay one thing at the door and then they can drink as much as they can hold inside that tent. And I've watched people carried out on there. So, I mean, it's, it's, it, to call it a Brew Fest, I, I'm sorry.
So, given the discussion that counsel's had, would counsel be willing to move a postponement motion with some direction to ask staff to come back with a square footage draft that would also give you time to work up amendments on fines to talk about in two weeks? Does that seem reasonable?
More discussion on multiple permits for Brew Fest?
It's up to, it's up to counsel. Counselor Plakas?
Can I, can I make a suggestion to put a, an amendment without proper wording on the floor to be wordsmithed? Part of that, to be wordsmithed, considering a postponement so that at least we have a vote of confidence in the direction we want to go?
Let's see, how would we do? Because we don't necessarily want to change the document with an amendment on the fly.
No, I'm not interested in doing that.
City clerk?
Your honor, if you just do an amendment saying the general intention, we can bring it back in second reading and then you can tweak it if you want to.
That's what I'm suggesting.
But we can certainly do that.
Do you have something in mind, Counselor Plakas?
Well, I, I do, and it's, it's similar to what I had said in my comment. If you'd like to take more comments, then I'll put that amendment forward if you'd like.
Any other comments on the square footage discussion potentially before we, he puts this amendment on the floor? Counselor Schuster?
I, I think the Gateway Plaza is a phenomenal one to use because I've been to several events there and I think that would be a good square footage one to use, their main ballroom. And I don't know if anybody thinks that's good, bad, or indifferent, but I would support that one for that size. And I can only guess what that size is.
Talking about a single permit.
A single permit for the entire room, the main room at the Gateway Plaza.
So, I.
If they do multiple floors, they have multiple permits.
And that would be a clarification I would like is that it's one floor, one room. You can easily stand there and you can see absolutely everything in there and whatever's reasonable for ballroom-type rooms in Laramie, I'm sure that the city clerk can work on that and figure it out.
Open concept venues?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like you got a lot of agreement before we've even took in a vote.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay. But Counselor Plakas, do you want to put one on the floor? Is there anybody that dissents from that?
No.
No?
So, if I'm hearing it right, I would put an amendment on the floor to, to allow multiple stations, I would say a maximum of three, a, a single room, one floor, and a, and a, and a room no larger than the ballroom at, at the Gateway. And by the way, that's the largest ballroom in the city of Laramie. So.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Is there any public comment on this amendment? Please come forward. Nope. Come on up.
So, if, and I'm not opposed to having square footage, but if you're going to do that at the Gateway, then I would think it would just be common sense to do it at the arena based on square footage, because I can tell you, I can see, you can see three bars in one, you know, if you're standing at Mickey's, you can see the other two bars. Or even at the, the football stadium, you have a floor where we had, where we had two bars at the. Or even at the football stadium, you have a floor where we had two bars at the beginning for the first two games and then we put them together, which, so I didn't get a refund on that license. But so each floor would be a square footage is what I would ask you to consider as well. And then I do have a comment and it is going back to Brew Fest and I brought this up.
I actually have to stop you right there. We can only take comment on specific to the amendment.
Oh, okay.
I'm so sorry.
So.
Any other comments on the amendment?
So I, that's what I'd ask on that square footage because I think, I'm not sure if you can make it specific to one building.
Well, for clarification, it's not specific to one building. It's just a square footage size to be used anywhere in the city of Laramie in one single room on one floor within that square footage. We keep talking about specific buildings and we probably should not be doing that in this discussion. We shouldn't be talking about specific buildings or specific vendors, but it's just a kind of average size. Okay. Any other public comment on this item, on this amendment? Okay, discussion by council on this amendment?
Well, I'll say one thing. When I say one room, I'm talking about a room. I don't consider the corridor or whatever you call it as a room. I consider it as a, as a large space that is different than a single room. If that, if that helps for my, that's my clarity.
Any other discussion from council? Counselor Houston?
Just a question. At this point, we allow one building with a permit, no matter how many dispensing places are in there, right?
With a license, if it's owned, if it's the liquor license holder's actual building that's in their complete control, that's different than a catering permit.
Okay, all right, okay.
Because that catering permit is essentially they take that and take it to somebody else's place. All right, any other discussion on this? City clerk, can you do real call on the amendment, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Oh.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner? Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, your honor.
Thank you, that amendment carries. Any other discussion that needs to be had before we maybe postpone this for two weeks? All right, can I get a motion for postponement?
I would still move a motion for postponement.
Second.
To a date certain, two weeks from this day's Tuesday.
That would be the May first meeting.
Thank you, May first.
Okay, thank you, I'll say.
We have a motion by Counselor Polikas and a second by the vice mayor. Any discussion or any public comment on the postponement motion? Okay, any discussion by council on the postponement? Counselor Hanson?
Well, I object to this whole thing because I think we're legislating morality. The only thing I'm interested in is legislating drunkenness, public drunkenness, because it leads to mess on the streets or driving while you're drunk. If the ordinance contains those items, I'm for them. Anything else, what people drink, how much they drink, that's up to people. And quite frankly, our permitting system flies right into the face of this. This whole thing is, for my taste, a matter of making the city money rather than doing anything of the nature that it's supposed to do. So I object to it, thank you.
Any other discussion on the postponement? City clerk, can you do real call on the postponement, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yeah.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero no, your honor.
Thank you, that motion passes. So this item will be postponed to the May first meeting for second reading where we will consider some other changes. So it is eight oh five, let's take about a ten-minute break and then come back for item number fifteen. So we're going to move on to item number fifteen and I'm going to ask the audience to bear with us while we do some procedural stuff here. Counselor McKinney?
Okay, I move to deny without prejudice the Spring Creek Preliminary Platte recommended by the Planning Commission and deny the exception to the LMC fifteen dot sixteen dot zero four zero H regarding block length based on the following finds of denial. Got to read all of this then.
City clerk, is that sufficient? How about you say the, based on the following findings of denial as listed?
As listed below.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. And then I'll go back to Counselor McKinney.
I move to amend the motion to read to approve Spring Creek subdivision preliminary plat as recommended by the Planning Commission and grant the exception to LMC one five dot one six dot zero four zero H regarding block length based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and subject to the following conditions of approval. One, condition two A, eight seventeen B, and twenty-one, as detailed in the council cover sheet, be reinstated. Condition seventeen A be modified to include Boswell Drive. Condition nine G be added and shall read as follows, or as.
Should be follows.
Follows.
Follows, yeah.
Apologize. Provide engineering design details for attached sidewalk to be constructed on the south side of Boswell Drive. Standards shall conform to the city engineering standards for local streets. Four, condition twenty-two be added and shall read as follows. Detached sidewalks shall be constructed on the south side of Boswell Drive in conformance with the city's engineering design standards for local streets.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second again.
Second by Counselor Schuster?
You want me to read the next one?
The next one?
Okay.
No, that's it, you're good.
Okay.
Okay. City staff. Senior Planner Bloom?
Honorable mayor and city council, this is the Spring Creek Villa Preliminary Plat. As noted, a positive motion has been made. What the motion does is it accomplishes several things. Number one, what it does is it, the condition or item one that was stated, it actually reinstates the four conditions that were removed by the Planning Commission. There is one item, it's item number twenty-one that is listed in item number one, that staff is all right if that condition is not included. That condition is the one that actually requires a traffic study to be done by the developer in the event that Boswell Drive is closed. As you all know, if Boswell Drive is to be closed, there'd be a lot more discussion we'd have at the city council level as well as at the Traffic Commission level and that has not occurred as of today. So to clarify, item number twenty-one is one that staff would accept being removed and that would be similar to what the Planning Commission had recommended. That's the removal of that traffic study requirement. A little bit more on that traffic study requirement. In the future, when commercial properties do develop in the area, at that time, traffic studies would be required. So if there are commercial lots that are developed on Boswell Drive, like the ones proposed under the plat, those would each trigger a traffic study, which could simply be an addendum to the existing one that we have today. So those are common with our developments that we have in town for commercial development. Conditions two, three, and four that Counselor McKinney had indicated, those are ones relating to public improvements. During the review process in two thousand seventeen, the city had been going back and forth with developer through different rounds of review and they had insisted that it move forward to the August Planning Commission meeting. After the Planning Commission meetings had gone through, we had identified that common public improvements that are required adjacent to final plats, those being to Boswell Drive, had not been included in the conditions. So those items two, three, and four are actually just reflecting those requirements. Basically, what it says is if you have unimproved rights of way, like streets missing a sidewalk, when you final plot adjacent to it, you will then build that sidewalk. Common items included in the recommendation right now are for installation of sidewalks adjacent to Ninth Street and other areas where they're lacking. Since the last city council meeting, we did have one additional public comment that was verbal over the phone. We had talked to the landowner to the south. It's actually a holdings group in Salt Lake City. They forwarded a copy of the staff report and they were not able to provide a written response, but they did indicate that they were concerned with the removal of the conditions because removal of a street connecting to their land and the sewer line could have adverse effects on their potential to develop the land in the future. So that conversation had occurred on Monday, but we have been playing phone tag as they had inquired a couple of weeks ago regarding the notice they received in the mail. With this, staff, we have actually provided an exhibit. I guess I can go ahead and pull this up right now. It's corrected, it is this drawing right here. Actually.
Which one is that, which label?
It is not on there. Let me go ahead and pull this exhibit up real quick. Bear with me for one second, I have to drop it on to the public drive really quick so we can pull it up on here. I would like to note that in staff's review of, we did an extensive review of previous subdivisions that we have had since the nineteen sixties and seventies, including up to today, that did require dedication and did dedicate and construct rights of way that were adjacent to the subdivision where there was no driveway access or road access. Our conditions that we're requesting are being consistent. We have identified at least sixty-eight in subdivisions that have led to the creation of Fifteenth Street, Seventeenth Street. We have Skyline Road, Willet, Twenty-second, Fourth Street. There's a variety of different streets. There's at least sixty-eight specific items that we have had where they have dedicated streets, Buford, Twenty-second. Those are other examples that we have. Counsel for that.
And my clerk?
Oh, perfect. All right. Which ones is community development?
Go down, down.
Sorry, my eyes must be failing. Well, we can, I can pull that up in just one second. Do you guys have any questions on the staff report?
Do we have any questions for city staff? We're happy to give you a minute. There we go, is that it?
Finally, it appears that works. So here's a little bit of context about how the subdivision fits into everything. Right here, this is your subdivision boundary. As you can see, it's this hashed area, kind of triangular, just a bunch of different projections. You have this little strip that comes out here, which is approximately, I think it's about eighty feet wide. This is on the south side of Boswell Street. Sort of look at the context of the overall street network. The green lines you see here, those are existing minor arterials. Those are ones that are developed and in use today. So you have the Bill Nye Avenue corridor, which is developed between Fifteenth and Nineteenth Street. You have the Fifteenth Street corridor running north and south. We have the Spring Creek Drive and Russell Street, Collector, which runs east-west. You have a corridor for Ninth Street, which runs north to south, and also Third Street and Fourth Street corridors. As you can see, this dashed green line here, this is how Bill Nye Avenue is proposed to be developed in the future in accordance with the major street plan. This major street plan alignment has been in place for quite some time. In the previous iterations of this preliminary plat, the ones that were done in two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen, around those times, both of those plats had had requirements for dedication and construction of that roadway. And in fact, I believe the first one actually showed the dedication and had conditions requiring the dedication. Or actually showed it on their plans. The one in the second plat actually had the requirements in place. So this is the first one where those requirements have been disputed. This is a closer-up look at the plat. Pardon the size of the font, it's a little bit hard to see on this. But this is the plat right here. This is how Bill Nye Avenue right-of-way would be dedicated to fit in the context of the current major street plan. This blue area here, this is what is existing and dedicated right now as public right-of-way that was dedicated with the nineteen seventy-two Nye addition. We do have an antiquated development agreement that has this, these property owners responsible for development of this land of the roadway here. We are in contact with them. We do talk to them every few weeks regarding this and they are willing to work together on a solution for this problem. With this plat, what we'd be asking or requiring is dedication of right-of-way for the area shown as red and also two options regarding bonding or financial security. They can go with the typical bonding requirement, which would be for a hundred and fifty percent of the estimated cost of public improvements. So they could bond for that. That bond would have to be in place for fifteen years. After fifteen years, it would be released or the city would require construction. We would believe we would be able to have all these property owners on board as well as neighboring ones to the north to create that corridor at that time. The unfortunate issue there is that ties up a hundred and fifty percent of the cost of the roadway for fifteen years. As alternative, we have allowed them to do a, do a possible or potential cash-in lieu, which would be for their proportionate share of roadway development. The city reimburses a developer thirty-four percent for oversizing of minor arterial streets. So what would be required is a cash-in lieu contribution of only sixty-six percent of the roadway cost. That would be a one-time contribution. That would then be used to let the city manage this whole project, work with this developer to have their share done and then run this as one project. So that's the options that we have given them for construction of Bill Nye Avenue. And those are conditions two A and seventeen B as listed in the staff report. There is another item, this is the sewer line construction. This is condition number eight that is listed in the staff report. This brown line here represents the sewer line that present, that would run through the entirety of the Bill Nye Avenue corridor. Pursuant to code, there is a requirement that the city requires that sewer lines be extended to the edge of the plat. You do public improvements to the end of your plat. What that does is it alleviates the concern for adjacent property owners where if they want to connect to a sewer line, now they would have to provide off-site improvements. It'd be the same thing with this developer. If this sewer line didn't exist because these, this developer didn't put it in, they would have had to provide this off-site connection. Initially, the city said, we, this line is in poor condition, it needs maintenance. It is scheduled for rehabilitation. Initially, our first conversations with the applicant was a condition that the developers would design and replace this entirety of this line. This was a requirement from the Public Works Department and the engineer. We were going to require oversizing so this line can serve future upstream customers, which would run in this area and eventually out towards the high school. So that was the initial, let them design it, finance it, we'd reimburse them for the oversizing. Throughout this process, we have, the Public Works Department Engineering have lessened what they have asked for and the city has moved up. And the city has moved up. A uh re- rehabilitation project to take this segment here. That's partly in the existing, it's in the existing Bill Nye right-of-way and on this part of the property. Uh the plat and we will roll that into our uh sewer line replacement program. And we will do construction on this. Additionally, we will do the extension. We, the city would be responsible for doing the extension and building it and designing it. From the uh manhole where it terminates at Boswell Drive to the section line. Um we are then offering the developer the option to either one um build this out. Enter into, into a delayed improvement agreement for the hundred fifty percent. Or contribute the um a cash and lieu for what would be their share for that line. So the city could go ahead and build it and construct it all in one fatal swoop. So again, that is condition number eight. So these are some details on some of the outstanding conditions. Um the roadway, the sewer line, and how it fits in the overall context of the major street plan. Um I'm open for any questions that you may have. The applicants are present. And I will apologize, I can't get too much into the nitty-gritty for um engineering questions. Our engineer looks like he's. Wasn't able to join us this evening.
Fair enough.
Oh, he's on his way, so we can delay those till later.
Okay, we'll hold on to engineering questions. Any questions for Mr. Bloom right now?
In our USAC meetings, there's been quite a bit of discussion about the extension of Bill Nye. We're not down to here because we don't have the funds to do it, but should the extension of Bill Nye be paid for by USAC money? Before two thousand thirty-three, would there be reimbursement? Should they participate in paying for the, the build-out of Bill Nye and their adjacent property? Since it's federal money, it's not city money, is, is there reimbursement capabilities for them? In that situation?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Shumway, when it comes to the urban systems projects. It really is about at what time does the right-of-way and the money come in? If this project was full steam ahead and the right-of-way had not been acquired. And the subdivision was not proposed, it would be built with the federal money. And they wouldn't have to pay for the roadway improvements. If they develop this, the roadway is dedicated, the delayed improvement instrument is agreed. Agreed upon, um and then ten years later, the federal um funding comes through, they would not see a reimbursement. It's the, it's the same as the um existing Nye addition, for example. Um that was a prior agreement prior to any funding being awarded and being programmed.
Just one quick follow-up. Should they decide not to develop this addition? And then prior to, I mean, we, we get the USAC money and it builds Bill Nye. Then they come in and reopen their proposed, proposed plat? They have no responsibility for Bill Nye if it's been built by USAC?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Shumway, um I believe that could be the case. I'm not exactly certain how YDOT does do their funding when you have pending plats or ones that are, are outstanding. Essentially, what that would do would, these guys would not be able to plat their land until such day.
Right.
Um that, that is planned and constructed. Um it'd be similar to what has happened in other events, like for Vista Drive, where they do coordinate with the developers. So they do coordinate with the developer to uh find equitable cost sharings and such.
Are there questions for Mr. Bloom? Counselor Polikas.
Uh if you could go to the map that shows the development of uh Bill Nye, that one there. That, the lower one on this, on the screen. That appears not to be adjacent to their subdivision. Am I correct on that or incorrect?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Polikas, the southern boundary of the subdivision is right here. This is where the mini storage development is occu- occupying right now.
Okay, that was a past sub, that was a past plat, correct?
This honorable mayor and counselor Polikas, this has not been planted. This is uh was included in the parent parcel. Which this is the land and it has that little jog out here.
So why wasn't that street required to be developed when the storage unit went in?
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Polikas, um when this mini storage was developed. They were developing it as one large parcel. We are under, the understanding they were going to final plat, their existing preliminary plat. Uh their project manager had indicated it would be platted. So we essentially considered this one large development parcel. And to be honest, we probably should have required bonding or something at that time. But we were operating under the um belief that they're going to proceed forward in a conformance with their approved preliminary plat. Which said they would be building that street.
So the storage unit doesn't have a final plat?
Does not have a final plat. And the storage unit parcel, the lot lines have been adjusted throughout this land. This is the unlawful subdivision in the staff report, to create an independent tract of land. Um outside of our, our city lot line adjustment process. Which is how they have uh circumvented. The requirement to build that room.
I thought you had to have a final plat before you could do construction.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Polikas, if someone has a lot or a parcel of land. That was lawfully created prior to the subdivision ordinance. And they can establish that there's no use on the land, they're entitled to develop it with one use. So when the mini storage complex was developed, essentially, we're looking at the parent tract of land. As one large parcel with the development right of anything allowed in that district. And they chose just to uh develop the southeastern tip of that land. And then the other stuff would be for later phases. So in order to remedy this. Is since this is developed, we can't have a developed remainder tract. Uh we are requiring that their first phase plating, plat that mini storage. To number one, rectify the lot line adjustment that should have gone through city review. Um and to place that mini storage complex on its own independent lot.
So we're playing catch-up on Bill Nye, if you will.
Correct.
That's why there's such a large section of it uh with this particular preliminary plat.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bloom at this time? Okay, thank you. Public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to make public comment? Please come forward.
Howdy, my name's James Johnson. I'm a professional engineer. And I provided engineering for the parcel that lies east of this. About ten years ago, residential development. And as part of that plating. Ninth Street was extended south to where Bill Nye will eventually come in. I really have no relationship to this at all. I don't know any of the details, but. I have to tell you that I would encourage you to stick with the recommendations from your planning commission. Because no matter what the staff says, requiring Bill Nye to be built probably kills a job like this. If you look at the plat, that road does nothing for the lot layout that they're looking for. And you know, it, it's an arterial, the Collector Road is a very expensive item to build. And it's not like. Laramie's not an easy market for land development. You don't see them running around driving Donald Trump-type airplanes around. I suspect most land developers in Laramie, if they make a ten percent return, they've had a very good year. That's potentially what you have to look at.
Thank you very much. And can you sign in on the, there's a white sheet on the table right there. Can you sign in for us?
Mayor, councilors, I'm Karen Valentine Pond. I am a real estate agent here in Laramie. I've been a Realtor for twenty-three years. And I will tell you from looking at the plat and also um the questions that I've asked of the developers. Laramie is in true need of affordable housing. And with what the plan is for that plat, it's not up there, sorry, but that's where it was. A hundred and thirty affordable homes in Laramie would be huge. Not, not only for our community, but for income for the city, income for the county. Hundred and thirty lots in um water bills, water tap fees. Um everything associated with the building part of those homes in Laramie, they're, they're truly needed. Um I live it day in and day out. I have people that I talk to every day. That are looking for affordable housing in Laramie. We don't have it. This particular plan right now is probably. From our market is about thirty thousand dollars a unit less. Than what is available right now in new construction. So it, it, it truly is affordable. Um if Bill Nye is put in and they have to carry those costs onto the owners of those hundred and thirty houses. They won't be affordable anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you could sign in on the sheet as well, thank you. Alright, any other comments? Does the applicant wanna make comments tonight?
Thinking about it, Mayor, members of the council, Mitch Edwards with Nicholas Entangement on behalf of the applicant, Spring Creek Investments. Wanted to uh. Ask a couple of questions and address some of the things that were originally stated. When city staff had the presentation up on the board. There was the draw-out, if you will, of Bill Nye. And it showed red and it showed blue. And it begs the question of when the city is planning to build the part in blue. That they have stated is their obligation to build. And I think that's very important for the discussions. I don't know if anybody here knows the answer to that, but they do, I'd like, like to know that because I think it plays into. Other issues that we need to address today.
I'm, I'm happy to take a list of your questions and then we can have the city staff respond to them.
The, I think what you're gonna find out is it's not any time in the near future. And that shows this council that Bill Nye is not necessary. Nor is it attached in any fashion, nor is it meaningful in any fashion to the subdivision. And so what, what the city staff is, is asking for is for the applicant. To dedicate and build a road that is not tied in any fashion to its subdivision or the impacts of its subdivision on the community. The same question I would have for the portion that dealt with the sewer lines. The city stated they were gonna rebuild and, and build sewer lines. When are those gonna happen? Not any time in the very near future. Again, this shows that that sewer line. The portion that the city staff is trying to require the applicant to build is not tied in any fashion to the subdivision. In fact, city staff and city engineering department is requiring. That the sewer for this subdivision come off of Ninth Street and not connect in any way to Bill Nye. So the Bill Nye sewer is not in any fashion tied to any impacts that this subdivision is having on this community. What we heard was that. They would like for this to be built out for the neighboring subdivision, neighboring lot owner, for their benefit. But that's not what the city council is in the, the task of doing, is benefiting somebody else's property at the expense of somebody else. In fact, I've represented before this council numerous times, subdividers or developers who have to do off-site improvements. Um and they have to pay those costs because those off-site improvements actually benefit their property or are necessary for the development of their property. Whether that's building the bridge across Thirty Street, whether that's building sewer lines, whether that's building roads to connect to those. Uh you see, my point is that in those instances, the city requires the developer of the off-site property to pay for the cost of that and to build that. Because it's necessary and required and a benefit of their property, um not the, the person's property who it was originally crossing. The. This, this goes into the direct issues of why the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eliminated conditions two A and seventeen B dealing with the dedication. And payment of Bill Nye Avenue. The, the only reason why the city staff is, is doing this. Is because it's on the major street plan. It has no benefit to the subdivision. And the major street plan codes and statutes deal with that, and I took you through it a little bit before, but what it says. In the codes and in the statutes is, the map may also show the location of the lines of streets on plats of subdivisions which the commission has approved. In other words, the major street plan can be shown on that, but there's nothing in the statutes or in the codes that require the dedication or the building of those streets. Unless it's necessary for the subdivision. If it's providing access to your subdivision. Or it's going through your subdivision, then it's going to have to be built. What you saw up there was Ninth Street and, and the Ninth Street had to be built for the neighboring subdivision. Because it was accessing that neighboring subdivision. That's why it was built. And it, I find it ironic that the neighboring lot owner calls in and says, oh, well, we want Bill Nye to be built, so it accesses our subdivision. Well, Ninth Street is built and actually goes into their parcel of their property. Um so they've already got the benefit of somebody else building a street um for that particular issue. What I wanna hand to you is a couple maps um that come off of the assessor's website. And maybe this will help since we don't have the uh, the staff report showing up here. What I'm, what I'm handing, having handed to you. From the assessor kinda addresses the unlawful subdivision and also helps address some of these street issues. The, the first one that you see, and I'm not sure what you're looking at, but one of them has a, a bigger portion outlined in yellow. And the second one has a smaller portion outlined in yellow. And the smaller portion that's outlined in yellow. Is where the storage units are. And what, what you have in front of you on the second page of each of those is the parcel identification information from the assessor's website. So. Each of these documents is a separate parcel. So what it shows is that the assessor shows that there's two. Two separate parcels, not three separate parcels. There's two separate parcels in this, this area. You have Boswell that runs through there, that's a dedicated right-of-way that isn't notated as a parcel because it's not a parcel, it's a road right-of-way. But what I was just referring to on the, if you look at either of those uh maps, you see Ninth Street. On the east side and it goes all the way into uh that little triangle piece toward the, toward the bottom there. Um so that there's access to that neighboring lot. Um and then below that is actually my client's property as well. As you can see that it's identified as part of the bigger parcel um that you see there. So this shows you that not only is there only two parcels in this property, no unlawful subdivision, which is the creation of three lots or more. By state statute and by, by city code. The lot line issue is not um, is not applicable to this, but. So there's no unlawful subdivision, but I wanna go back to the storage parcel and talk about how it was actually created. Because I think that there was a uh, a little bit of confusion about that. The way it was actually created. Um was the storage parcel was created under a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit required that bought, they, the developer built Boswell Drive. That was the only condition that was. That was the only condition that was on the conditional use permit, and they did do that. Then according to the statutes, they, they separated that particular piece of property from the rest of the the property to create two parcels, not three, so it's not a subdivision under the statutes or the codes. So that, that addresses that issue with respect to that. The, the issue with respect to dedication and building of Bill Nye, it's not required anywhere in the codes, it's not required anywhere in the statutes, and the staff can't point you to that because it's not there. Instead, what they do is they say, hey, look, the comprehensive plan, they, they cite all these generic codes that say, oh, it should comply with the comprehensive plan. Well, there's nothing in the comprehensive plan that says that you're required to dedicate a street that doesn't benefit your property and isn't necessary for your subdivision. So they're throwing a bunch of codes, and, and I would love for them to specify for me the specific code that says that they're required to dedicate and build those areas. And it's not there because state statutes provide that the way this is done with a major street plan is it, it becomes an encumbrance on the property, and it's subject to when you go to get your building permit, you can't build there. But if you can't build there, where that area is, where those lines are, the city is required to go through eminent domain proceedings to purchase that property. They can't just take it from you. And these types of conditions are the exact, that the city staff is trying to put on this development, are the exact kind of conditions that the United States Supreme Court has found to be unconstitutional conditions. Constitutional law, one, to law school, you'll learn the cases of Nolan and Dolan. Nolan was out of California and Dolan was out of Oregon. In both of those cases, the cities and towns were requiring as a condition for development that the developer provide, dedicate land and build, whether it was bike paths or other things, to the city as a condition of their development when those particular issues were not required or tied in any way to their actual development. In other words, it had no impact on the development, well, there was no nexus to addressing any impacts that the development was gonna have on the town. And in one of those cases, the Nolan case, the United States Supreme Court said that those types of conditions were actually outright extortion. While they may serve a legitimate business or governmental purpose, and that the, the city may want to have those particular rightsway dedicated and those paths built, it was actually a plan of extortion because it wasn't necessary or tied to any impacts that the subdivision was having. That goes back to the point I was making to you, the fact that the city is not going to be building Bill Nye at any time in the future shows you that it has nothing whatsoever to do with the impacts of the subdivision, it's not useful for the subdivision. So not only under the major street plan codes and statutes is it, is it an unlawful taking to require the dedication of that street and the building of that street under US constitutional precedent, regardless of what the codes may say, where they say eminent domain has to be used, I would argue the same thing. Now, those other subdivisions where the city staff was talking about that, typically those are required streets for access to those subdivisions. And you saw it with Ninth Street to the, on the Fall Creek next door. So that's why they would be getting dedication of streets because they're streets in the neighborhood. And that's why in this particular instance, when they build out the streets in the subdivision that are required for the subdivision access, the city will be getting those streets dedicated to it as part of that process. So we would actually ask that you remove conditions two A and seventeen B from your, from your consideration here today, just as the Planning and Zoning Commission did. The condition number eight that is asking to be reinstated deals with sewer line, and it falls under the same thing with the exception of the code doesn't even require it in any fashion. And I outlined this for you, but the city code actually says that all wastewater and wastewater mains required to serve a development, including cross-connecting mains, shall be installed at the cost of the developer. So the only, only wa- water and wastewater mains that are required to be installed at the cost of the developer are specifically, as the code states, are those that are required to serve a development. What they're asking in condition eight is for the extension of sewer line that does not serve this development. It's not required under this code. City staff says, well, gee, the next sentence then would, is a separate sentence and would require that. And that sentence says, "The developer shall install mains to the farthest point of the subdivision or to the appropriate terminus within the development as determined by the department." And they're saying, well, that's a, that's a separate requirement. Well, okay, then, if, if it's a separate requirement from the prior sentence, then that means that the developer might have to install them, but they don't have to pay for the cost of them. So the city should be paying for the cost of the developer to install them, is what the city is apparently arguing? Makes no sense. Those two sentences are, are together talking about what is the required of the developer in terms of the cost. And it's those, those sewer lines and water mains in this particular instance that are required to serve that subdivision are being built out to the edges of the subdivision where required. So where they're building the sewer lines from Ninth Street through the subdivision, they're terminating where they're required to terminate outside the plat. What we're talking about in condition number eight is not anything that serves this subdivision. Only thing it would serve would be the neighboring property. And like I said, I've been in front of this council numerous times where they've required that the neighboring property go out and build off-site improvements to service their subdivision. So we, we would ask, just as the Planning and Zoning Commission did and recommended to this council, to remove the condition eight from consideration. So what we're asking is conditions two A, eight, seventeen B, and twenty-one to be removed from the motion that is currently before this body on the amendment. With respect to condition seventeen A, what city staff is asking for in adding condition seventeen A be modified to include Boswell is, is curious to us why it's being added in that. Seventeen A deals with the bonding of streets that haven't been developed yet. Boswell has been built, developed, it's been accepted by the city, and the warranty period is up. It may be that they're trying to talk about the sidewalk that they want to be built along that strip, but that is not what seventeen A deals with. Seventeen A deals with the, what it says in there is forty-foot, sixty-foot right-of-ways and development of the local streets. So that, adding Boswell there doesn't make any sense to us. With respect to condition nine G, adding in the engineering designs for the attached sidewalk on the south side of Boswell Drive in condition number twenty-two, those are things that were never before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are new, they had never been raised before to the developer. They shouldn't be raised now. But believe what they're talking about is the sidewalk or Boswell across from the Corona Village along that little eighty-foot section that can never be developed because it's not big enough to be developed. And if you were to continue to the west, that's where the little city park is. City doesn't even have a sidewalk on its own property. So if they were to require them to build this sidewalk, it'd be a sidewalk to nowhere, absolutely nowhere. So we would ask that those, those be removed as well because it just doesn't make any sense to build a sidewalk to nowhere that serves no purpose other than it costs them additional money in that process and is not beneficial in any way to this particular subdivision. So here we are, we're asking you to go right back to where we started in asking you to approve this subdivision on the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission without the conditions two A, eight, seventeen B, twenty-one, and the other conditions that the city staff now belatedly is asking this council to install into this particular subdivision. The other issue that I wanted to address with respect to the condition number twenty-one, and I believe staff has conceded that it's okay for that to be removed, so I don't want to belabor that. But that was the issue, the traffic impact analysis, and our, our position there was that that should not be required because it's not something that is, this developer is, is placing. They've already done their traffic impact analysis. If Boswell is closed, it's closed, and that condition is created by the city of Laramie, not by this developer. And so that is not something that the developer should have to bear for the city's decision to close Boswell, which ironically, the city required had this developer to build to the tune of eight-hundred-plus-thousand dollars for the storage units to be built in. So we'd add, that's, that's the issue with twenty-one. And I believe the city staff is in, appears to be in agreement that that should be removed as well. So in any event, we ask that you approve this without those conditions, just as it was sent before you by the Planning and Zoning Commission. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Do you have any questions for the applicant's representative? Seeing none at this time. Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment on this item? Is there anything else from the applicant or applicants?
I can come up for just a second.
Sure. Please come up.
I'm Jason Stephen, owner of Gateway Construction. I was gonna do like a whole big presentation, but it's getting late, so I'm gonna really try to cut to the chase. I think that Mitch did a good job of explaining a lot of the issues that we have. But what I really wanted to do was just talk a little bit about the benefits of this subdivision and why I think it's important that we approve this subdivision. And I kinda came up with really four big benefits to this subdivision. One is it provides much-needed housing. Two, we're gonna provide a very nice bike path and an internal park. Three, we're providing economic benefits to Laramie and also to Albany County. And four, the benefits, this, this subdivision benefits the community as a whole. So going with the, the need for housing, and I know that Karen talked a little bit about that, but this subdivision is gonna provide a hundred and twenty-three affordable homes that are starting in the low two hundreds. These new homes will be energy-efficient, modern, and, and more attractive. These homes won't have basements, so they're great for a, for an older population. They'll be twin homes and townhomes, so they're more efficient to build, keeping the price down. And then I'd also like to refer to Housing Study, I think it's called Housing Study 2030. This is a study that was not done that long ago that I think the city of Laramie paid for. And if you look through that study, I think you'll find that we meet all of the recommendations of that study. That study refers to the city needing to identify three hundred and seventy acres of residential development land. It talks about building a hundred and twenty owned housing units for low to moderate income households. It talks about building four hundred and six rental units for low to moderate income households. And it talks about that two hundred and ninety-four of those rental units should be targeted towards the elderly. And it even brings up in that report that an emphasis should be placed on twin homes or duplexes and triplex units. And another point of that study is that it also talks a lot in that study about providing support and incentives for developers. So moving on to the bike path and the park, just real quick, the bike path is two thousand five hundred lineal feet of bike path concrete. The internal park is seventy-five hundred square feet for a total dedicated land to the city of forty-two thousand square feet. This land is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, and this is something we're not disputing, this is something we've agreed to do. We think that this bike path and this park will help the subdivision, and it will be a benefit to the city as well. And then the bike path construction will cost a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So you're looking at three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of bike path and park that we're basically just giving to the city. This has been talked about, I think, one other time, but just a real quick summary on permits and other fees. So, you know, we figured out how much money we would have to spend to build all these units. Permits and plan review fees are three hundred and fifty thousand. Plant investment fees would cost seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and we would contribute about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in sales tax to the city. Annual property tax on this development, once it's completed, would be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I'd also like to make a quick reference to a National Association of Home Builders study that was done just recently. That study indicates the economic impact of building new homes in a community. And per one hundred homes built, what that does is it basically creates three point six million in taxes and other revenue for that, for that community. And that's just the initial building process, that doesn't count that, the continuing on. The continuing annual reoccurring revenue is one million in taxes and other revenue. And then in the benefits to the community, I think we've all been out there, I'm sure you all have, it's not real pretty. So this, approving this development would give us and afford us the opportunity to go through and clean this area up and make it look a lot nicer. Obviously, we know it provides additional housing options for, affordable housing options for residents. It also provides new commercial opportunities. And another thing that I think is a lot of times forgotten when we're doing housing developments like this, referring back to that National Association of Home Builders study, they indicate that when you build a new development, for every hundred homes built, you create three hundred and ninety-four jobs. And you also create twenty-eight point seven million dollars in local income. So those are really my big positive impacts that I've come up with for this development. And after doing that, you know, I looked through this and I, I started thinking, what are the negative impacts of doing this development? What, what is, is there anything negative? And to be honest, I can't, I can't think of what it would be. I mean, there's no complaints about, you know, that this is gonna ruin my property value. There's, you know, nobody's sitting out there saying this is gonna make this neighborhood look bad. There's nobody saying it's gonna drive down their property values. I really don't see any negative thing about doing the subdivision at all. And in light of that, I guess I just don't know why we wouldn't approve it. I mean, I, I would just hate to see something as simple as a road that leads to nowhere, that knows when it's gonna be built, stop something that's as beneficial for the city.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. If you guys could also sign in on the sheet, on the table behind the city clerk, that would be great, if you're gonna speak. Or if you have spoken already. Is there any other comments from the applicant or any of the applicant representatives? Is there any other comment from the public on this item? All right. City staff, there was a couple of questions that were asked. We could address those. Have, and I have a list, but go for it.
Honorable mayor and city council. Feeling this again.
It's just minimized if you want to hold that back up.
Number one, there was a handout that was provided showing the, on the assessor's map. We do have the county ownership maps showing two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen where the parcels have changed, the ownership has changed. There's a process for minor land division. Lot line adjustment is cut and dry, it should have gone through that process, it didn't. So that's clear as day there. Question number one, I believe that was, when will Bill Nye Avenue be constructed? We don't know exactly when. We are working with the other property owner, they're in communication right now, we'll have hinges on the outcome of this. In looking at the numbers for the cost of Bill Nye Avenue, the entire segment from the channel to the southern boundary of this plat, it's roughly eleven hun- or it's roughly seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to build. Their share that these developers would be responsible for is forty-six percent because the other fifty-four percent is in the Nye addition. That brings it down to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. These are our, this is our engineer's estimate. Of our, the share that we are offering to let them give us cash in lieu is two hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's sixty-six percent of what they would be responsible for. You have a hundred and thirty-three residential lots. That translates into one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents per residential lot. And that doesn't even account for the six commercial lots. I don't know what a commercial lot goes for nowadays, but they can range, they're pretty expensive in, in that area. That's why they haven't developed. You could easily sell those for two hundred, three hundred, I'm not a real estate agent, I don't know. Their estimates are pretty close to what the city has, the estimates they provided in their correspondence. They estimated the cost of Bill Nye to be three hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. That was, ours was three hundred and thirty-nine. Again, taking our share, that drops it down to two hundred and Again, taking our share, that drops it down to two hundred and forty-three thousand for them. Adding in a sewer cost, they estimated thirty thousand. We didn't, I didn't include the sewer costs in this. Adding that all together, and assuming we're oversizing by two inches, which I don't exactly know how much we are, we may be oversized by two inches, possibly four for that sewer line. Their sewer line cost would be roughly twenty thousand dollars for their little extension south of Boswell Street to the section line. Using their numbers, that translates into one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-seven cents per lot, and there's still those six commercial lots that have not done it. That's, that's not a, a huge item of contention when it comes to adding that cost to a, the cost of a lot. Mitch did bring up two historic planning court cases, the Nolan Dolan cases. Yes, what that looks at is essential nexus and proportionality. Dolan, that was about a plumbing shop and a exaction to require a large dedication of open space and a bike path and all of that. So, in our eyes, looking at the code requirements, looking at our comprehensive plan, we do feel that these improvements, you know, they are related to this subdivision. In the future, when this roadway builds out, builds out, these residents will be using Bill Nye Avenue, they'll be using it to get to the high school, they'll be using it to get it to Third Street, they'll be using it as an integral part of our system. The second item that I understand was an issue, was a question, was the sewer line schedule? When will it happen? Eric Japp, our city engineer is here. He had informed us that it's ready to go right now. If this subdivision's going to go forward, they would plan for design and construction with the next construction season. Director Earl Smith has indicated he will look at his construction projects and reallocate to make that a higher priority, because this neighborhood would need that. So, it would probably be constructed within one to two years, depending on how long that design and construction would take. So, those are really the only three questions I gathered from the.
Mr. Blum, I, I had one more, and you've touched on it, but I, as well as when did we plan to build the road and the sewer lines, there was also the question of how does Bill Nye benefit the subdivision, which you've touched on, but also, how does sewer line serve this development? That was another point, another question that was brought up.
Honorable mayor, I'll pass it on to the engineering department.
Did you hear?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Japp, welcome to our late night Tuesday meeting.
Thank you very much. Your honorable mayor, members of council, could you kinda say exactly what the question was on the sewer? I must've missed that exact one.
No, that's okay. The question was, how does the sewer line benefit this development? Does it serve the, does it serve this development, the sewer line under Bill Nye, the portion that they would be required to build?
Okay. Your honorable mayor, members of council, it, they are tying in lower on the development. However, the staff's interpretation of code, that was noted, let me pull up that code. Mr. Edwards had noted it. That it is the developer shall install the mains to the farthest points of the subdivision or to the terminus, and it is the opinion of the public work staff that that would be to the end of the Bill Nye. That will be to serve future development and not put the hardship on to future developers that they would have to install that sewer line for development that may occur past this area.
All right. Councilor Schuster.
I didn't hear the answer. They said, and I don't know if you're here yet, they said they will be hooking to the Ninth Street sewer line and not the Bill Nye sewer line.
Your honorable mayor, members of council, they're actually hooking at two locations. One is down to the lower section of Bill Nye by Spring Creek. The other is on Ninth Street. That is their plan at this time.
Thank you.
Councilor Polikas.
Same subject. Does the Ninth Street sewer go into the Bill Nye sewer?
Your honorable mayor, members of council, Polikas.
Is it, is Bill Nye downstream from?
Yeah, the Ninth Street line ties into the Spring Creek line that runs on the other side of Spring Creek. They both end up at the same location eventually, but it is two separate lines. So, the Ninth Street line runs down Ninth Street North. It crosses Spring Creek at Ninth Street. It ties into the, the road that runs along Spring, Spring Creek on the north side. That runs down to approximately, I believe it's Fifth Street, and that is where the Bill Nye line ties in to that location. They both connect into a larger downfall line.
So, it doesn't tie into the Bill Nye line?
Not directly into the Bill Nye line.
Within the preliminary plan?
Their section does, actually. It does tie into the Bill Nye line. They have, they tie into it at two locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or clarification for Mr. Japp while he's up here?
Mayor, if I might, just reading from what Mr. Edwards brought up on the Dolan case from Wikipedia, it says, "To use zoning and land use regulations to compel property owners to make unrelated public improvements." So, apparently there is a disagreement on unrelated public improvements?
So, I'm gonna, Mr. Japp, please, Japp, you don't have to, to answer that.
Okay, I think that's a fundamental question to, to this discussion.
Mayor, if I may, I couldn't disagree more with the honorable Mr. Edwards reading of those cases. We have statutory ordinance authority, these serve proper governmental interests, they don't take the economic value of the property away, so this is not a taking. I have no, I wanna be very clear, though, as a legal matter, I have no opinion on what you should do, as council, that's completely up to you. But I think to the argument that you can't do one thing or another in this situation is wrong.
Thank you, city attorney. Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, honor. I guess I have an engineering question. Sewage flows down, not up, so I presume that will determine how to hook up the subdivision so the stuff disappears. And is that why we have two points of connection, or what's the reason for it? I, I presume I'm just talking physics here, but I'm interested in that.
Your honorable mayor, members of council, Councilor Hanson, you are correct. We try to always get flow, sewer to flow downhill. The tie-in locations were determined by their engineer as they went through the development to make it work with the grades of the plat and their flows and everything along those lines.
Well, then the question would be, if that's the engineer who determined that, would it, in your opinion, work with one connection so that we don't need the other one, or, I mean, that's sort of a, the question again to the necessity of, of that, building out that line and that street.
Um, you know, I, I don't feel like comfortable answering that at that time, at this time. The engineer designed it to the best of his ability. It was his design, I mean, with significant grading, could it work? Possibly, I don't know. We don't get into that kinda level of review during our development review.
But it was, was not the city that designed that?
No, it was not the city. This was, the connection points were determined by their engineer.
Thank you.
Councilor Shumway, for Mr. Japp or somebody else?
Yes, Mr. Japp.
All right.
As, as I've understood this, there's gonna be a connection at Fifth and Bill, and Bill Nye on that sewer line. Has, has there been any thought of, of oversizing the sewer line from Fifth on down, the flow? Or is that gonna remain as it's already been constructed?
Your honorable mayor, member, Councilor Shumway, are you talking about the Bill Nye line of oversizing that, or?
Well, my understanding is they have two lines, they move one down Ninth, and then another one that moves somewhere, as you explained it, that comes down and it connects to the, the Bill Nye line at Fifth. My question is, at Fifth, where there's a connection, is there any thought to oversize that to pick up the capacity of the sewages that's coming into there at Fifth and, and this?
Yes, that has been discussed. The, the line that runs to the north of Spring Creek that ties the Ninth Street into that Bill Nye line was over, we replaced that line, I believe it was two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
Okay.
And that has been oversized for that. The line where it crosses Spring Creek in that area, we would probably do an analysis, and we kinda talked to that with the developer, but look at upsizing that line if it would be needed.
No plan, just?
We would look into it.
Possibility.
Yeah, there's, there's a possibility, yes. If we move forward with the design of it, that's when we would take that analysis into account.
Councilor Schuster.
So, there, there is a current line that would follow Bill Nye, probably in somewhere around Boswell, is just a guess now?
There is an existing line that runs across, I think, I believe it's around Fifth Street, up, across the Spring Creek, it runs up where the future Bill Nye goes, up to Boswell. That is an existing line. Public work staff has noted that that line has some issues in it, and I believe it was discussed, we had talked to the developer, that the city would pay to repair that line with part of this development, if, when Bill Nye was built. The purpose for that was to get the line rebuilt prior to Bill Nye being installed.
Okay. So, the, the one big section would be the city, and they would have the small section plus another section on the other side of it?
That is correct.
Okay. I understand small section down near Spring Creek.
Any other questions for Mr. Japp? Thank you. All right, so we've been through public comment. It is nine thirty, so this will be the last item that we're doing for the evening. Discussion.
Your first speaker.
So, I've been doing a little math, sitting here, and if a hundred and thirty homes sold at two hundred and twenty-five thousand apiece, we're talking about revenue in the thirty-million-dollar range. Okay? We're having a discussion tonight related to twenty thousand dollars that we're asking the developer to pay related to sewer. And we're asking the developer to pay roughly a hundred, or two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars related to road. That works out to be roughly point nine percent of the potential revenue of this project in terms of sales of homes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor Somerville. I'm sorry I can't be there in person, everyone. I just wanted to kinda dovetail off of the final gentleman who spoke, who had this presentation prepared, and echo a support and interest in creating affordable housing and, and enthusiasm for this project. I think that all those things are true. It adds so much to the community, but I also think that the regulations that we have very thoughtfully created around development exist for the same reason, for our community. And I think it's important to be predictable and process-oriented around those. And I know we are going to have a work session about picking up from the workforce housing plan and how to kinda incentivize development more, and I would love for Mr. Stevens to continue to be a part of that, but I am comfortable with enthusiastically supporting this development tonight, but with the current motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council tonight? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you, honor. Yeah, was a discussion about item number twenty-one, which nobody seems to be, neither staff nor the developer seems to think is very important to be in this, and I wonder whether we could make an amendment to take that one out.
Would you like to make a motion, Councilor Hanson, to remove condition number twenty-one?
I think it's item number twenty-one.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gabriel. Any public comment on this amendment to remove condition number twenty-one? No further comments from the city staff on this one? Right? Okay. Back to council, any further discussion on this from council? City clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
No.
Pierce?
No.
Somerville?
No.
That is six yeses and three noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion from council tonight? City clerk, roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster? Shumway? Polikas?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is seven yeses and two noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. This will move on to.
Your honor, that was your amendment one. We still have the main motion. You had a motion, and then we had an amendment.
No.
No, that was the main.
You did two. So, when you started, McKinney made a main motion, which was the first one that came from the last meeting.
All right, that was an hour and some odd ago.
That's okay, your honor, that's why I'm here.
Move it to the.
So, that was your amendment.
Move to amend to, to make it a positive motion.
So, now we actually have our final motion. That's okay, that's why I'm here.
I changed my vote to yes.
Do we have any changes on the first vote?
Positive motion.
Which was?
On the First Amendment?
No, the amendment's fine, I changed it on, I want it to be a positive.
City clerk, can we retake votes on both of these items?
Respect.
City attorney, are you okay with that? My, my apologies for not being clear on which vote was being taken. I totally forgot about the amendment an hour ago.
The council was confused. I believe that what you, you had made a motion to substitute.
Uh huh.
You had amended that substitution to remove twenty-one, and so you, I thought you were voting.
On removing twenty-one, or?
No.
Putting, making this, making the substitute motion the main motion.
Yeah, the main motion.
But it wasn't a motion to, a substitute, it was a motion to amend.
It was.
Your honor, I just need to clarify, I made the motion to remove twenty-one on the positive.
On the positive, yep. Give me just a second to sort this out, the city attorney, my heart of apologies, everybody. It's been an hour since we put that in.
You've amended, now, you've now amended the main motion.
We've amended the main motion.
Says in the cover sheet, minus number twenty-one.
Correct.
So, we're good?
No, the cover sheet doesn't say minus twenty-one, it adds twenty-one back in.
What?
No.
Doesn't it?
We, we took that out.
You took it out.
We took that out.
Took it out of the amendment.
Okay, so now we're moving to approve, to amend. So, we moved, we, we took twenty-one out?
Correct.
That's correct.
Now, working way backwards, we've approved.
You can go back to your cover sheet.
All right, now, we've approved the amendment.
You are now addressing the motion.
To a positive motion.
To approve Spring Creek subdivision with everything except twenty-one.
Okay, so now this vote will be to approve the subdivision.
With everything except twenty-one.
About twenty-one. Thank you very much, city attorney.
Can I make one last comment before you vote, or are we?
Um, we can, if it's a quick comment, yeah, I think we've kind of already started our voting process, so where are we?
It's just, it's evening, and I just wanted to make one comment, 'cause this was never brought up, dollar values were never brought up with the staff before about how much Bill Nye was gonna cost, and, you know, what, how much they were gonna charge us. This is all new information, but I just wanna point out that we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that you're asking a developer to put upfront. This isn't something that we can do over time. Staff has already indicated that they want us to, to plat that area first, which would require then for us to come up with all of that money upfront before we ever even touch the ground. And doing that costs a lot more than just the dollar value of that. We would have to go out and find that money somewhere, and banks don't loan you money on that kinda stuff. So, I just wanna point that out, that it is a lot more than just so much per lot, because we haven't even developed a lot yet. We're, we're writing a two hundred and some thousand dollar check, and we haven't even developed a single lot, so just.
Fair enough. Thank you so much.
Your honor.
Councilor Polikas.
Just a point of order. I think some of us might be confused, actually, what we.
I think some of us might be confused, actually, what we were voting on, on that last vote. I'm not sure it's going to change the vote.
I don't think it will either.
But I was of the opinion that we were voting on the, absent, admittedly, the, the final motion with the amendment. As it turns out, we were voting on.
To amend, to a positive motion.
To turn it into a positive motion. So I think for clarity, it would be best to redo that vote, so we all understand what we're voting on.
City attorney, are you okay with that?
I think since the record was not clear, the council knew what they were voting on, it'd be fine to take that roll call vote again.
All right. Okay, let's try this again. This, to be clear to everybody, this vote will be on amending it to a positive motion with 21 having been removed. Okay.
There we go.
City clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment?
Stoner.
Councilor Stoner?
Mayor, thank you. Just to be clear, the other recommendations from Planning Commission, the exemption, in what we're voting on right now, they are or not included?
It includes the staff's recommendations.
Except for 21.
Except for 21. City clerk, roll call on the amendment to a positive motion.
Gabriel?
No.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, your honor.
Okay, thank you. So now can we do roll call on the final motion?
Yes, your honor.
Second reading.
Second reading.
No. No.
First, we delayed it. We never got to the first.
We never got to first reading, first reading.
There's only one reading.
It's a final plat.
It's a preliminary plat.
It's a preliminary plat.
Right. Right. Final plat.
Final vote.
Are we, please, we're good? Okay.
Go for it.
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Pierce?